Ready? Good. Okay, we will reconvene to public session and roll call. All board members are present and accounted for. We do have a quorum for today's meeting. Public comment announcement. Pursuant to Board Policy number 2350, public comment may be limited to five minutes per person or 30 minutes per topic. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the Recording Secretary or online. Pledge allegiance, Mr. Buffalo.
Everybody turn, place your hand over your heart and begin with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the agenda? Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Open forum on non-agenda items. Kendra Das.
Good morning, ABC Board members and guests. In 2014, the college hours changed and classified employees were required to change working hours. We only had a short time to adjust our lives to be able to accommodate the new working hours to properly serve our students. Many of us had to change childcare and elderly care situations immediately, which caused a financial hardship. Once again, in April of 2020 and August of 2020, we were required to change back to the original hours and work the five eights, again with little time to prepare, and we were once again faced with the financial impact of childcare, elderly care, and after-school and sports activities. Some employees who commute to work are now forced to work five days a week instead of the modified four tenths. This has also caused financial hardship, and we still have not been compensated. We feel we are being punished for actions or decisions that we had no voice in. Because this is still not resolved eight years later, we are uncertain as to if we will be notified to change hours again and possibly face more financial hardships. Not only have our work hours been affected, we feel our sick and vacation times accrued are not accurate, and our lunch breaks are now limited to 30 minutes. We are also concerned as to how and why the district seems to be ignoring a court order, yet still expect us to come to work with the best of intentions. Some of us are feeling unappreciated for the work we have and continue to do with no compensation and little respect from the district as to how these changes affect our work and personal lives. We are hoping this will be resolved in a timely manner so we can all focus on the real reason we are here to serve our students. Thank you.
Emma Ford. Is she on? And as a reminder, you have five minutes.
Is this one about the purb?
I know, but it's five minutes total.
Five minutes what?
You have five minutes to discuss all of your items.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank the classified who came forward to speak and share your concerns regarding the purb. Your support is greatly appreciated. Now, as for the board members, I just want to briefly just discuss the action, the purb action, and that is, when is it going to be resolved? Because December 28, 2018, is when purb rendered its decision, and it still hasn't been resolved. Michael, this one is for you about the presidential search. Uh, because I believe you and I have been here through many presidential transitions, and the process for search committees has always been in place. But there has also been another process we have gauged in, engaged in, and that is while the search is occurring and between presidents and interim is hired to that seat until the new president is selected. I have observed over the years that this has allowed for a period of healthy separation between the departing and the incoming president, allows for outstanding issues that need to be resolved, an opportunity for resolution, eliminates any influence of the outgoing president, and to be honest, and most outgoing presidents don't try and influence their predecessor. Most importantly, it allows for the board to give careful consideration as to what is needed to move the campus forward in a positive direction. As an example, Dr. Yee was the interim after Linda Spink. Patricia Sandoval was the interim after that little fiasco with Deanne Larios, and Patricia Sandoval was the interim after Dr. Fisher. Is the board open to an interim before the search begins to allow for a seamless, unbiased process? You all are in receipt of the letter that our legal counsel submitted concerning the layoff. So I'll just make the most poignant points, and that is, the date of notification, Chris, was an error because it occurred, his layoff, the six, he's being denied his 60-day period. Um, his seniority date was inaccurate, and based on the, uh, based on your approval, he has also been denied his displacements right. And this needs to be addressed, so I'm hoping that you will rescind the layoff for Chris and, um, move forward in a positive way because he does have the right to bumping rights based on what you all approved with all the errors in it. I also had a question about this speaker thing because I guess you want to eliminate, uh, limit what we have to say. And, um, I wanted to know if this was being approved to bypass the CCC consensus because we did not, there was no consensus reached on this. So since we don't have an opportunity to speak fully to you, we will from now on submit our written comments, thereby affording you the opportunity to receive detailed information regarding each matter and affording you as the board greater accountability. Thank you.
Moving on to item 11, student housing presentation.
Hello. Hi. Good morning. For those of you who might not know, I'm Dr. Jill Zimmerman, and I'm the Dean of Student Life and Services here at the college. And Anne Volt is from Scion Group, and you'll hear more from her today as we make this presentation. We've submitted to you some information that we think, and if you could just move forward, you want us to do the clicker? So, um, as you know, Antelope Valley College has been an active, involved partner in our community's issues with homelessness. We, um, as our purpose is to educate our community, well, we know that with all of the basic needs, if our community students are not having those basic needs meeting, it's very difficult to focus on any subject matter for any exam and any test. And so we've been doing basic needs things, I don't know, maybe we're at 15 years that we've been doing it, and every year we increase and increase. Well, housing is one of the new areas that we've gotten into about five years ago. We know our need, we know our mission, we know that we're here to provide comprehensive education so that our students can become taxpayers within our community and beyond. We have been actively involved at, from the very beginning, from the Homeless Coalition, which I attend every month as an active member, and the supervisor's office has contacted us. We helped as, as part of the plan in writing the District Five's housing, uh, overall plan and looking at how that affects students. So we've been doing this regularly. I'm on the steering committee, I'm on the housing plans, worked with both the cities, both Palmdale and Lancaster, and their housing plans. And then we've gone a step further, right? We've said, okay, we've been doing this, but now let's actually do the housing. So we've created, and the board approved, our MOUs with a couple of our local providers that we work with, The People Concern, Valley Oasis, and AVPH, which does our wraparound support services. Putting a student into a home without all of the supports to make them successful is not necessarily the only issue. So of course, we have to provide all of those wraparounds. Everything that we have on campus, they also get a benefit from as well. But they need a little bit more, having trauma, being homeless, moving in your car, just not knowing where you're going to sleep that night is very different than what I experienced, right? So we provide all of that wraparound by the MOU proposal that we've done for you. But again, that's not enough. And ABC, you always know, we always want to do what more we can do. So a grant came out, and we, um, applied for that grant. There are 14 community colleges. It's called the HIP money, the Housing, Homeless and Housing and Secure Funds, and we were awarded $700,000 a year for three years to provide actual housing. We pay for rents, we pay for hotels, we pay for, um, any kind of other wraparound support services. And that went through, again, the MOU that you've all signed. But from that and from relationship, and you know this community has relationships that are far among others, they have done, the city of Lancaster has gifted, if you will, four houses for us to use that we can house students. The city pays for all of the utilities, pays for all of the houses, pays for everything. AVPH does the wraparound services, but we can only put in students into four smaller homes. Unfortunately, they do not take students with children. So where does that take us? It takes us to, well, we've got to do more. Now, we know that our students are doing well. There's three of them that are graduating and transferring. One is going to a full-time job, and one's transferring. But we're in this, we're in this, and the state has said, wait a minute, there's a real need here. So they're proposing a whole other grant options, which we've applied for. But before we did that, we knew we had a need, and so we were successful in securing Scion to come in and talk about what they do statewide, actually around the nation, about housing. And they did a feasibility study for us, and I'm going to let Anne explain all of those steps of what we've done and how we know what our demand is for our students, other than the ones that come in. So with that, I'm going to introduce it to Anne.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate being here today, and I will look real quickly. Just, um, real brief is the Scion Advisory Services. We are a 22-year-old firm. We are a campus housing objective advisor. Here, always to share with our clients, of which 27 are in California in the last five years, and we're really pleased that Antelope is at the top of that list. Um, but really saying, do you have demand? What does that demand look like? Is the institution ready? Is the community ready? So it, it's very holistic in nature. Through that process, and I certainly won't go through all these steps, but it's a very intense qualitative, quantitative research. So very appreciative to many people that are in this room even today for giving us their time, for your students, for giving us the time. We've spoken with the city on several conversations. So looking very holistically, we did a quantitative survey for your students, and it has the logic that says to us, are they a student with a family? Are they a single student? So we can really break that down. What are their rent tolerances? And we had to build models with the high construction costs, too. So we had to test what students, what could also be built. So, um, and all of this work then went into a very extensive financial modeling, showing different outputs with different programs, all tying back to what your students have said they have for demand with housing. So where are we at right now is we, I'll go to the key findings in one slide, but it's, what are or are there next steps, as Jill said, to do more for the students? We've heard the stories. It is horrific in this state. My colleagues and me, what we hear, I just, I, it's just saddening for the students, but our work is not to just go work with our heart. Our work is to really work with the data. So that, that being said, is the key findings that we came back with is that on your campus here, we have demand for, we included Palmdale, for 350 to 391 single students. But we also know, too, you have a significant population of students with dependents. And that demand came back, and you do single students as beds, and then families you do by units. So that came back to about 127 to 141 units for students with families. And that was at those rents, too, that, um, unfortunately are fairly high in our state to deem financially feasible as well. There does need to be a business plan behind it, of course. So where are we at now, as I pointed back to that slide a couple, um, couple slides ago, is that implementation plan? And we've been working really closely with several of the members here, including President Knutson's leadership, Dr. Zimmerman, several others in this room with me today, including your city. On what's that site? We are not architects, but also, too, what is that site from a student perspective, from a safety perspective, from a student services? As Dr. Zimmerman mentioned, those wraparound services. So that's the way we've been looking at sites, obviously working with your leadership here. As Dr. Zimmerman mentioned, and when we did our work, we were not aware, and I don't think anyone was, that SB 169 was going to come out, and it came out quickly. And it came out with $2 billion worth of funding for low-income student housing in our state. And the grants were due quickly. So I do have to say it was a very intensive two-week period because that's how much time we had, and really looking at who qualifies for that housing, 12 credit hours. It needs to be shovel-ready by December of this year, or next year. That'd be interesting, this, this year. Um, and it really, the students have to income qualify through different financial aids is how we showed that. So your team here, too, gave us all that data. We did modeling then to show, too, and I don't know if you can see that left and right chart, but when you take, and we modeled a public-private partnership, I'll talk about that. Then we modeled, too, what is really just the cost if there's no debt service? And also, too, you need capital reserves to make sure the building is obviously maintained through its lifespan. And we modeled those rents and obviously submitted to the state, and you can see a huge, significant swing when there's not obviously the cost of debt and the significant construction costs that burden the student rents. We will find out in March to June is what the Department of Finance has told us. It's a quick program. There's several questions. There's several things that are being worked out with it for what the state has told us. But the conversations are there. Um, the grant money is real. The bill has been signed, and Antelope Valley College has submitted a grant. So just real briefly is public-private partnerships. We are not an advocate of any financing method that you choose to use. We just purely give you the financial numbers relative to objective demand numbers and show those different output, outputs, and the impacts on several different levels. Rents, financial return to maybe provide scholarships, many different aspects that go into it. A public-private partnership per the school's direction limits risk. It doesn't, it doesn't eliminate it. It mitigates a lot of the risk, and it provides a fair, a really significant level of control for your student experience. So it's bringing in a developer, it's bringing in a not-for-profit owner, so you can use tax-exempt financing, and that allows you to have a student-only housing community. So we ran several different models and looked at that public-private partnership. Those are the rents you saw on the previous slide that were on the left-hand side of the column. This is not your timeline, but this is showing how if we do get the grant money, I'm not here to put any pressure on anyone. I would never do that. I promise you, the state put the pressure on us. But if we do get the grant money, one of the requirements that at least is in place, as I mentioned, is shovel-ready by December of 2022. So this is an incredibly tight schedule. I've never done one with these short parameters before, but it, it would require an advancement on design fairly quickly into the new year. So just sharing that those are the parameters right now for which we're working. So that's where we're at right now. Um, obviously, here, any questions, please?
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Reeves? Mic, microphone, Mr. Reeves?
The college, uh, college leased the, uh, made agreement with the Marriott on J-8 and 20th. The house students, has that ever been used? Did we, uh, did we approve that?
No, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with that. We were using, prior to our MOU with The People Concern, we were using the Holiday Inn. The problem with that is, um, they are not suites, and I've talked to the president about some alternatives. So the cost of food, so they had a place to live, but they were, you know, they had no money, there was no place to cook or whatever. But we did have that for a short period of time. We shifted that funding in the MOU that you did with The People Concern, and, um, we've been working with them, but, uh, that is one of our new, our additional exploring for the immediacy.
Did anybody use it?
Yes, at the time, sure. Um, about 15 to 20 students used it, but they have then either moved into other permanent housing, have not continued in their education, graduated, or have been moved over to The People Concern and have moved to a different hotel.
Thank you. I have a question. To the lady, uh, is your firm in charge of Kensington, Kensington Village? Do you have anything to do with that over in Lancaster?
Oh, we are not, and, and I, no.
Okay, uh, one last question. You said that we have to be qualified by September of next year. Is that, did I understand?
Uh, for the grant?
Yes.
The grant requires that the, what's in the, the bill language is that the projects are what they call shovel-ready, without a real strong definition of that by December of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Barbara. Um, I just, quick questions about the grant. When did the grant period end? For submissions? So what was the ending of the grant period?
Oh, the grants were due on Sunday, October 31st.
Okay, and when will you find out about the award?
The email that we got back, or actually, it was sent to you, said somewhere between March and June of this coming year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm, my idea of shovel-ready, I would believe, means that we are already DSA-approved and everything is complete, literally ready to go. Based on the fact that, uh, we will not hear about this grant until, uh, sometime between March and June, that I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that the, the community college would have to design and, and planning is going to have a dollar amount attached to that. So could, could you give me a rough idea what we are going to have to go out on that limb? What dollar amount to get the, this construction designed and, and all the, all the, um, surveys, et cetera, that need to be done? There is an element of risk in that the grants are never guaranteed.
So that's a great question. It partly determined, too, the delivery method that we choose to do. But no matter what, um, and I agree with you, shovel-ready is very challenging with DSA approvals by December. So I completely align with your question. So if we, it depends on when we start. If, um, I'd have to look back at the models, but of course, each month you're at more exposure with, because you've, either if you go through a P3 and the college chooses not to change their mind, you'll be working under a pre-development agreement that should the college choose to change its mind, it's certainly at risk for all the fees that is directed to the developer, which mostly sit with architectural fees, um, at that time. I'd have to look back, um, probably about 100, I mean, it's, if you go through all the way 100% CDs and you, um, you're probably at around, don't quote me 1,000% in this number, but you're three to four million for architectural fees. Now, that's what it depends on how we do the delivery. If you do it, you know, if you do design yourselves, of course, you're paying that architect reasonably so right away, or within whatever their, their bill parameters are due. If you went through a public-private partnership, that developer would be paying those architectural fees. So it wouldn't be an actual outlay of cash, but should you decide not to go forward, then of course, that money would be owed to that developer. So there's risk each month, depending on when you start. That, I, that's just, it's a great question. I'd have to look back at the financial models to see exactly what we put in for architectural fees. There's others. It's not just architecture, but that's your bulk of what we're, of where we're at. There are, like you say, some initial testing and whatnot that we need to do for the site.
Yes, and do we know, um, and I'm sorry if I missed, if you said it, what the amount of the grant that we've applied for is?
It was 100 and, I can't remember now.
So, uh, we applied for both part of the planning, which we include the architectural part, and the building, and so $189 million, which we have a grant, based on the units that we're looking for. That's a large chunk of that is allocated to community college, so I don't know if that's successful, but why not ask for it all, right? So we asked for it all based on the model, but we'll know as soon as we know.
Yeah, I just know that it's impossible for us to be DSA-ready if we wait till March and June to actually have, uh, the answer on that and be ready, shovel-ready by December. We're really, really pushing it, and highly unlikely we would be, be shovel-ready by that time. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
We did a, just a briefly, we did a little market testing with the architectural community and agreed with you, and, but we, they all said that we could probably be at 100% CDs, but DSA approval was certainly the, what we can't control. So I completely agree with you.
We are all in this, uh, everyone applies for all that.
Ms. Harvey?
I, I believe Dr. Zimmerman, they have answered the question that I had, and that was, uh, in the grant, did you write in for like the architect? All of those things are covered in the 189 million. So we shouldn't anticipate any direct cost if the grant is approved. Am I correct?
I don't know if it would be 100% approved.
Okay.
But the goal was, of course, to ask for everything.
Yes.
And, and that was a conscious decision, um, but that is the goal, is to not have any delay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board, uh?
Uh, I was wondering, since it is hard to get like everything ready before you know when the grant, whether we get the grant or not, um, would it be possible to start working on that? And then if we get the grant, like reimburse that money in a sense?
You're asking a really good question for which everyone, the Department of Finance has shared with us, those details need to be worked out. When we did the grant, as of Sunday, October 31st, any monies that had been spent to date per the grant could not be reimbursed. It's unclear if that cutoff was when we receive it, that date. Unfortunately, it's unclear, and we've asked that question, and, um, it's just not been able, I don't think it's been defined yet by anyone.
Okay, and I also wanted to thank you both for your work in helping students in meeting their basic needs. Um, we all know it's very important, and it helps students so they can transfer and also have a career in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
I, this is a question for President Knutson. You know, we've talked about this. Uh, if we decide to go this route, is, do we turn everything over to the firm? Can they handle it, the land, the buildings, everything, or are we, the college still involved?
Well, with a public-private partnership, you turn it over to a nonprofit in the private sector, and they are the developer, and they deal with it, and they use the leverage of the college for both qualifying occupants as well as, as the construction through the grant process. If we go a different route, then, then we would be directly involved. I, as we have gone through this process, I have said we're not putting housing on campus, and we're not going to manage it. That's a liability level that I just don't think is prudent.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much. Moving on to item 12, Board Organizational Business, and item 12.1, my last official act. Moving on to item twelve, Board Organizational Business, and item twelve point one, my last official act as president of the board. So I am, uh, I have a very large grin on my face beneath this mask. Uh, election of officers, may I hear a motion to nominate a board member for president of the board?
Yes, um, President Adams, I would like to nominate, um, Mr. Steve Buffalo for president of the board.
Thank you. May I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none? Uh, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Buffalo, congratulations, you are president. May I hear a motion to nominate for vice president of the board?
Move, we nominate Barbara Gaines for vice president.
Thank you. May I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Gaines. And finally, may I hear a, a motion to nominate for clerk of the board?
Nominate Mr. Hardy?
Nominate.
Mr. Hardy? I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes unanimously, and we will now play musical chairs.
Hershey's kisses.
Oh, no. I do not need any more.
Don't get your almonds. Get your almonds. Michael Adams? He goes to the end. No, 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 it's that. That's how we rotate.
Both of them? Okay, they're going to speak to the same one. Okay. Did we deal with the foundation board? Yes. So I'm going to twelve point four. Twelve point two. Okay, I'll catch up here. Okay, is everybody in place? Cool. Okay, now we're going to go to item twelve point two, selection of one board member to represent the district in the election of members to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization and selection of one board member to represent the district in the Los Angeles County School Boards Association. And, uh, do we have anybody who wants to do that?
I can do that if no, yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, advice?
I approve.
Call for the vote? Okay. Aye, okay. Okay, twelve point three, selection of one board member to represent the district in the Alamo Valley School Boards Association for two thousand and twenty-two.
Nominate Ms. Gaines?
I second that.
We have a second, okay. Any discussion of that? Okay, if not, advice?
I approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. Okay, we have the selection of one board member, board member to represent the district on the Alamo Valley College Foundation Board of Directors for two thousand and twenty-two. Any preferences?
Nominate Mr. Adams.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no one opposed, okay? And now we move to item twelve point four, the approval of Superintendent's Organizational Meeting Report. Twelve point five, okay? Do we have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, then we have twelve point six, approval of the two thousand and twenty-two Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. So we move down to item thirteen point one, Report of Closed Session Action. We have no report. So we're going to move into the consent calendar. I believe we need a motion to approve, uh, the calendar, and what we are doing is pulling item fourteen point ten. Okay, do we have a motion for that?
Mr. President, I'd like to pull fourteen point eight.
Okay, items fourteen point eight and fourteen point ten will be pulled. Anything else? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items fourteen one to fourteen ten minus fourteen eight and fourteen ten.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's move along to, I'll take them in order, uh, item fourteen point eight. Mr. Reeves?
Um, I'm, as you well know, I'm very interested in the bookstore and Barnes and Noble.
Hold just a second. I believe we need a motion to to discuss the item. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, as you, uh, well know from prior discussions, I'm interested in the bookstore Barnes and Noble. And I wonder if the vice president can give me a report on how they're doing over there in the financing and what's going on with the bookstore, please?
Uh, so Mr. Reeves, we do have the balance sheet and the income statement from Barnes and Noble here. We've, uh, fully outsourced, as you, as you're well aware, um, Barnes and Noble is, um, is a good partner, it's a valued partner. They, uh, temporarily suspended operations at the Palmdale, uh, site due to, uh, low student volume and low volume. There was just not utilization there. They're set to resume on January third. More than that, uh, we do plan to meet with them shortly, and Dawn McIntosh is here. She has more specifics on their operations, if you'd like that, but if you have any questions on the balance sheet or income statement, I can definitely help answer those. We are going to let these, this income sheet and this balance, uh, sheet continue through the rest of the year, and then we're going to close out this entire fund as of six-thirty, so that is the plan. From the, from the, um, inventory and the assets, uh, section as you see here.
Do you have any of the people that worked in there before Barnes and Noble working in the bookstore now?
Um, no. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything further? If not, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, advice?
I approve.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to item fourteen ten, Revision of Board Policy twenty-three five oh. We have a couple of speakers' comment cards. Uh, Jason Bowen?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Stat. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a privilege and an honor to address you this morning. My concern is, uh, uh, item fourteen ten, which was pulled. I am grateful to see that. However, I'd still like to comment regarding my opinion of it. Uh, there are three issues that I see with it. Uh, the, the reason, I don't know why it was pulled, but one of the reasons may be because its advancement here violated AP twenty-five ten, meaning that it moved through CCC without consensus. That's a, a big issue because that means then that it would appear and be up for approval and, but yet violating your own policies and procedures. The other issue that I have with it is, it, it's related to other issues, meaning there are arguments that are made to push policies through, and one of the arguments that is common, and it seems to be growing uh, more common, is that we enact changes because other people are doing the same thing. So we, so for example, for, you know, this, for fourteen ten, we have community colleges of north, uh, who are reducing speaking time from five minutes to three minutes. And so that's a justification then for us to do the same thing. Now, that's just, in my opinion, that type of argument is, it's cheap and psychologically powerful. And so, uh, there is, there are moments where that's appropriate, but then it must be supplemented with arguments looking at the merits of some change in policy. The, I, I want to make another comment, a comment on another issue with it, but I, I want to read an email that I received yesterday that I looked at for the first time after I was asked to serve as a proxy at this meeting, so I thought it'd be appropriate to read it. But I'm, I'm reading it at the risk of appearing, this action appearing exceedingly self-serving, but anyway, I'm going to go ahead and read it. Hey, Dr. Bowen, I'm not sure if you remember me. I took a few of your classes in, I think, twenty sixteen, seventeen, Physics One, Two, and Calc Three. I'm the girl who liked Kendrick Lamar, ha-ha. Anyway, I graduated. It took me a while because of family stuff, but I did it. Thank you for all of your support and guidance early on in my academic career, your support, motivation. Helped me more than I can express. Thank you for always listening and having your door open to me to talk about physics and life in general. It made all the difference and I appreciate it. Sorry. Now, what I'm most proud of in that is that this young lady said I listened. That's what I was most proud of when I saw that. I'm not always generally a great listener, but I do work, I continue to work hard on it, and then even so much so that my ex was surprised that in some conversations I just listen. I'm a more effective listener than I used to be, and one of the reasons why is because I give people time to talk. So when I see that, you know, there's a rewrite of policy to reduce the time to speak to you, leaders in our community, from five minutes to three minutes, and five minutes is not a long period of time. But when the amount of time people have to speak is being reduced, then it discourages the individuals from speaking. The community, in my opinion, would feel that you don't want to listen, that you want to hurry up and get the comments out of the way to get the business done, which there's important business to get done. But I think one of the most important pieces of business we have as leaders in the community is to give people time to talk, and that's one of the things that, that I've done with this student here, and what I continue to do. They walk in. You know, Dr. Bond, I had flat tire, I had to call my cousin, and then I say, yeah, and keep going, and I say, okay, good, you solved the problem. So what I would like, what I hope to see is that this change does not move through, that we continue to have at least five minutes to address you. Thank you.
Okay, we, we need a motion on this matter, and then I'm going to go with Pamela Ford. Do we have a motion to approve item fourteen ten?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, um, I think the next speaker is Pamela Ford. I'm a little slow. Yes.
Pamela Ford, Classified Union President. And I'm speaking to agenda item fourteen point ten. Since this Revision of Board Policy twenty-five ten, Speaker says now move to the consent agenda. Does this imply that this BP is moving forward with the board's approval, even though there was no consensus from CCC as required by AP twenty-five ten? Is this now the college's approved policy to bypass CCC when consensus is not reached? This change creates a chilling effect. If this is the case, and we're unable to conclude our comments based on this newly imposed time limit, then all our comments will be forwarded to you, which affords you greater accountability for the decisions that you're making for our campus. I don't see how this benefits the campus, and we have policies and procedures in place, and I think that we need to, maybe if you want things to run smoothly, maybe start following your own policies and procedures.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion on those?
Yes.
Just Mr. Reeves.
Well, you know, I'm the big speaker in this town. I've spoken before more boards and councils than anybody in this town. I can, I can say that before I was elected, and I'm still talking before the different boards, and the time limits are three to two minutes. And one of the councils, they count the time from the minute you get up to you get to the podium, which is unfair. So I went through this list. They gave us a list of the community colleges that have five minutes. And I want to read some of these colleges out to you because they're, they are our sister colleges in Southern California. Like Choritas Community College is one of them. Glendale, uh, Mount San Jacinto, Riverside, San Bernardino, San Diego. Our sister colleges in Southern California give people five minutes, and I want to keep the five minutes because it's very difficult to get up before a board. And two minutes you're trying to get your bearings and speak. Uh, the other two minutes you're trying to put out what you want, and then you have to wind it down. Five minutes is not too much. Now, somebody's going to say the Brown Act is, says this and that. This is the Brown Act. I looked at it. This, this book was given to me by State Attorney General in one, uh, one of my sessions before, uh, all these councils. I didn't, I saw that in here that the board can regulate the amount of time and to allow people to speak. We don't have any great deluge of people here. We mob the people that speak that we can't spare five minutes to listen to the people we represent. No, we're not, I, I don't think we should change. We keep the five minutes. Thank you.
Any further? Ms. Gaines?
Yes, Mr. President Knudsen, I just want to clarify something, uh, with your advice, please. It is my understanding that any current president of the board can, for any speaker, uh, allow them to speak up to five minutes on any topic. Am I correct or am I mistaken?
Uh, no, you're not mistaken. It's that the pleasure of the board to allow somebody to continue to speak. These are guidelines. Part of the reason for the change in the, in the BP is, first of all, at three minutes, you can, and thirty minutes on topic, you can hear ten speakers instead of six, and the other portion of the, the BP that is there is instruction to people who want to address the board that need assistance, whether it's sign language or some other assistance and how they address the board. So that's the reason for, for the board policy being in front of you. It is at the discretion of the board. If you want to allow somebody to continue to speak, that certainly is at the discretion of the president of the board.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? I, I will point out that we have done that in the past. I, I know.
I know recent times haven't been that way, but there have been meetings where we've had a lot of people here and a lot of discussion, and the board did extend those time limits.
And I, and I would have to say that over the year that I was president of the board, I never cut anyone off after five minutes. I did remind you that you were approaching your five minutes, but several of them went over the five minutes and I didn't cut them off at five.
Okay, if there's any further comments? If not, advice?
I do not approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Naye.
Passes four-one and no one advice. So moving along to action items. We'll start with fifteen-point-one, Approval of Alavale Community College Federation of Teachers AVCFT, Notification of Articles from the Faculty Collecting Bargaining Agreement to Negotiate Starting Spring of two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fifteen-point-two, Approval of Alavale College Better Federation of Classified Employees AC, AVCFCE, Notification Regarding Proposed Items to Be Negotiated. Do we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item fifteen-point-three, Approval of Side Letter Agreement Between Alavale College Federation of Classified Employees and Alavale College, Community College District Regarding Article eight-point-six Emergency Compensation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All approve?
Aye.
Okay, moving along to fifteen-point-four, Approval of Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for Measure AV Membership Appointment. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Reeves.
I look at some of these names and it looks like it's a, a meeting of the establishment. I'm concerned, and I'm not, I wasn't privileged to look at the legislative intent, but I did read the law, and it mentioned various people that need to be on the oversight committee. Now, in this current roster that we are to approve today, let me pull up some names here. So we have one man who's on the Planning Commission for the City of Lancaster. We have another man that's been on the committee, but he's recently been appointed to the Finance Committee of AV Hospital. We have a lady, she's a school board member, and she's also on the AV School Transportation Agency Board. And we have another gentleman who's classified as being a taxpayers' group. In actuality, he's the executive director of the Air Quality Management District. You know, whatever happened to ordinary citizens and, and having them serve on these boards? These people are on multiple boards, they're part of the establishment of the community. Thank, thank you for your service, but I would like to see ordinary people, like somebody that has a kid in college on this board. I don't want these people who are on multiple boards, this guy that's on the Planning Commission for the City of Lancaster has missed the last four or five meetings, so that's not encouraging. So I, I'm voting no on this. I think we ought to go back to the drawing board and put some ordinary folks on this oversight board. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, Mr. Knutson?
The list was compiled because these are community leaders and outstanding members of the community. They have performed admirably on the Oversight Committee since its inception in two thousand sixteen. The individual you talked about from the Quality Management Board is also the president of Board of Trade or former president of the Board of Trade, which is a taxpayers' group. There are categories that are required by law to be filled. They are filled by people who are strong supporters of the college, have a vested interest in the college, and want to see it succeed. And they have met diligently over the last four years, five years, in their work. And they have agreed to go to staggered schedules so that the board will have some historical value as well. I would hate to see their, their willingness to serve this college in support of a bond measure that they helped pass be denied.
Well, no one, President Knutson, is questioning their integrity and their dedication of service. What we want on the board are ordinary people, ordinary citizens that can attend the meetings and are not part of a group that kind of controls this city. Thank you.
Hey, any further comments? Discussion?
I have a comment, President Buffalo. I would like to remind the board members that being a board member here at ABC is a nonpartisan position. Thank you.
Yes, that is very true. Any other comments?
I just want to say that we are talking about a committee that oversees a three-hundred-fifty million dollar bond. And I think that having representation from planning commissions and people who know this work is also critical as we move forward in the construction and development of all of the projects that fall underneath that three-hundred-fifty million dollar bond as we promised the community when we sought the three-hundred-fifty million dollars.
Okay. Anything further?
Vice President Gaines, the Planning Commission of the City of Lancaster has to approve any projects. So we're putting somebody on the Oversight Board who's going to vote whether we build Student House. I think there's a conflict there. Thank you.
Planning Commission does not control our building activities.
We're totally under state control in, in this board. Anything further? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it's four-to-one, and yes, any advice. Moving along to item fifteen-point-fifteen, Approval of Continued Funding Application for CSP California State Preschool Program for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Item fifteen-point-six, Approval of two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Athletic Spring Sports Schedules for Men's and Women's Sports. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fifteen-point-seven, Approval of Agreement with Oxford Suites. That's pretty simple. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I wonder if President Knutson can explain what this is all about? Because I noticed when I looked at it on the internet, pulled it up, it, it had this thing, it said view permission to look at contract. And so I guess I didn't get to see all the contracts. I wonder if he could explain what this is about.
This establishes room rates for people who are visiting here at the college on, on official business.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passing unanimously. Item fifteen-point-eight, Approval of Professional Service Agreement with MGI Advocacy Incorporated for Legislative Advising Services from January first, two thousand twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Yes. Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. We're going to pay three thousand dollars a month for a legislative group to go up to Sacramento to tell us the same stuff that California Community College League is going to tell us. Do we need our own person at three thousand bucks a month to do that? I, I think not. The money could be used for hire a professor or instructor. Thank you.
Well, this, we've had the contract with MGI now for several years, and we had this discussion last year at this time when the contract came up. Yes, the league advocates, but it advocates for all hundred-and-sixteen colleges as one. This individual provides us direct information from Sacramento as it applies to particularly single college districts and rural districts of which we are one. And he also spends a lot of time with me finding out what our issues and concerns are, and he advocates directly in the Capitol Building for us on those issues and gets many of them put as part of the deal. Case in point, the student-centered funding formula was going to be a year-to-year deal, but it now is involved in a three-year moving average on FTS. That came from this college.
Any further discussion?
We have two legislators that go up to Sacramento to advocate for this area, Senator Welp and Assemblyman Lackey. We shouldn't have to pay three thousand bucks for another legislator to represent the college.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Approval of Amendment Number One, Consultant Services Agreement with SCCS Productions Incorporated with H-E-E-R-F Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen-eleven, Approval Agreement with Ready, oh, fifteen-ten, excuse me, Approval to Negotiate Contract with Public Safety and Economic Development, PUB, SEG, for COVID Tracking and Tracking Services with H-E-E-R-F Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
There a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fifteen-eleven, Approval of Agreement with Ready Education Incorporated for a mobile transform, mobile platform as part of the COVID tracking and tracing per state guidelines with H-E-E-R-F Funds. Do we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? None? Advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I could say her, I guess. I just chose to spell it out. Okay, fifteen-point-twelve, Approval to Purchase Battery Backup Equipment with Northeast Systems, NE Systems Incorporated with Herf Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, now we get down to fifteen-thirteen, Approval of Purchase Server and Storage Equipment for NC's three sixty with Herf Funds. Do we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fifteen-point-fourteen, Approval of Agreement with NCX Group Incorporated with Herf Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen-point-fifteen, Approval to Purchase Computer Equipment from Dell or Sage Hall. We have a motion.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fifty, item fifteen-point-sixteen, Approval to Negotiate Contract with Yuja, or Y-U-J-A Incorporated on online video platform services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen-point-seventeen, Approval of Southern California Edison's Companies two thousand twenty-one General Rate Case Application Related to Added Facilities Agreement with Twenty-Year Replacement Coverage. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. President, can someone get up and explain this to us?
This is a, this is an extension of an agreement we had. It covers the, the equipment that, that Edison put in so that we don't have to play the, pay the replacement cost.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor? Okay. Item fifteen-point-eighteen, Approval of Contract with Environmental Assistant Group for Hazardous Material Monitoring Consulting Services with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, fifteen-nineteen, Approval to Utilize Norstan Communications Incorporated DBA Black Box Back Black Box Network Services Piggyback Agreement Through National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen-point-two-oh, Approval of Agreement with Cummings Manu- Management Group Incorporated for Label Labor Compliance Services with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, can President Knutson tell us what this is all about?
We have a cooper, a community workforce agreement in place with some of the local trade unions for projects that exceed, I think, a couple of a million dollars here on campus, and they require labor compliance, monitoring, and mediation should it be necessary. This group provides us services.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fifteen-point-two-one, Approval of Division of State Architect Fees for Swing Space to eighteen-point-zero-one-one with Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All approve?
Aye.
Okay. Item fifteen-point-two-two, Approval of Project Assignment PAA Revision to Kruger, Benson, Zeimer Architects for Architectural Services, Swing Space Phase Two Projects with AV, Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen-point-two-three, Approval of Project Assignment PAA Revision to Ledesma and Meyer Construction Company for Construction Management Services, Swing Space Phase Two Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen-point-two-four, Approval to Award Contract for Construction Services of Marauder Complex MC dash one to Sean Kahn Consulting Company, DBA SKC Company with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item fifteen-point-two-five, Approval of Change Order for Sage Hall seventeen-point-seventeen-dash-zero-three-one with Measure AV. seventeen dash zero three one with Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Approval of change order fifteen night, fifteen point two seven, approval of change order for Student Services Project seventeen dash zero three seven with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Item fifteen point two seven, approval of change orders number zero zero four dash zero zero five and zero zero one dash zero zero two for Discovery Lab Project seventeen dash zero three nine with Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion? A second? Okay. We have a motion and a second and any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point two nine, approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on stage Hall Project seventeen dash zero three one, American Landscape Incorporated with Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, my goodness, okay. Hold back up. Can we just take this? Okay, we have a motion and a second advice?
I approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm trying to move this fast, but I guess I missed item fifteen point two eight. So it's because I marked everything here. Fifteen point two eight, approval of change order number zero six dash zero zero two for Discovery Lab Project seventeen zero point three nine or seventeen dash zero three nine with Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. If hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, so we are back at item three, fifteen point three oh, approval to file notice of completion of and resolution of acceptance on the Sage Hall Project is seventeen dash zero three one, Dart Engineering Company Incorporated with Measure AV Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Wow.
Okay, fifteen point three one, approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the Sage Hall Project seventeen dash zero three one, inland building construction incorporated with Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point three two, approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the Sage Hall Project seventeen dash zero three one, JK Excavation with Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Fifteen point three three, approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the Sage Hall Project seventeen dash zero three one, Recorder Steel with Measure AV Funds. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question for President Knutson. When we file, approve these notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on these projects, if something happens later on, we, are we able to go back and go after the construction company to rectify it?
Ron or Don, you want to answer that for us?
Hi, whoops, sorry. Good morning. That's a great question, and yes, we do have that ability. We are currently working with Keenan and Associates, and we have an OSIP SWAP program which protects us so that we're not we have insurance on all of our projects through this OSIP SWAP program as opposed to individual builder's risk. So we are covered through the insurance company as opposed to individual contractors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All of, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So passes unanimously. Okay, well, we're down to reports and announcements, academic. And Mr. Van Rider is not here, so I guess we have nobody giving a report or and then we have the Antler Valley College Federation of Teachers, and that's going to be Jason Bowen.
No report.
Okay. Item sixteen point three, Antler Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Pamela Ford.
First of all, thank you. I want to thank all the classified employees. You are essential to this college and you're the reason why our students are so well-served. I'd also like to thank the board for finally settling the eight point seven emergency compensation to the employee, to the affected employees who served us essentially during COVID. To the district and trustees, my hope for the new year is that there will be a willingness to work together and minimize all legal costs to the district. This can be easily accomplished by open communication and not bypassing policies and procedures as you've done by approving VP twenty-three fifty, by packing your patience and demonstrating a willingness to listen to both sides, by being open and agreeable instead of being dismissive and retaliatory towards officers of the union, by requiring the same compliance of your administrators as required of your employees. It is an awful example that you're setting by not complying with district orders, which is a pattern that's been set by your administration. I should say by your recent administration. I share this with you due to the district and administration refusing to adhere to collective bargaining agreements and additional perb char- that additional perb charges can be forthcoming, and my hope is to avoid future litigation and that we can reach resolution to issues in the new year on campus instead of having to go outside to try to reach resolution. You can ignore me and ignore the policies, you can ignore collective bargaining, but we, we have a role, we all have a role. We have an agreement that we all agreed to and signed off on. And so if we respect one another and we respect the agreement that we've agreed to, then all this litigation that's going on can be avoided simply by communicating and by having leadership that's mild and humble-hearted and willing to do that. And I also hope that this reality retaliation that's being brought forth against union officers, especially in the classified union, will cease so that there's no more of this minimizing people, marginalizing, or trying to uproot them from their workspaces just because you feel that there's something wrong with the way that, with, with the fact that we're living up to our fiduciary rights and upholding the rights for working conditions for our employees. So I wish you all season's greetings and a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixteen point five, Associated Student Organization, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. I have a report from the ASO president. So ASO has a meeting today. I believe their meeting starts in a few minutes, so getting ready to do their last meeting of the semester. And their main goal is to discuss ASO's direction for next semester and how they will be proceeding in the new year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need to go back to Michelle Hernandez.
That's okay, Steve. There is no report for the CMSA group. We do wish everyone happy holidays. Be safe this season. And we hope to see you healthy and happy in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, sixteen point six is Antler Valley College Foundation, Diane Knutson.
Michael, thank you. I'm so thankful for you to continue with us. You've been a great partner on the foundation and you're a huge supporter of us, so I'm so glad that you're continuing. Some really good news on Giving Tuesday. I want to thank our community here at ABC, our employees, and our community who did some matching funds for Giving Tuesday. We have reached a new record of a little over twenty thousand dollars going to the Hearts and Hands Pantry Endowment. And with Jill Zimmerman's support, we're going to increase that endowment to close to thirty-five thousand dollars. So it's great to continue and really appreciate everyone's support. It was a great year for that. Michael, just Bardza Noble, just for your info, is a great supporter also of our students and a scholarship. They contribute about seven percent of their retail sales, non-book sales to the foundation, and they are also on contract to establish an endowment as well for scholarships. So they've been a really good partner with us. Happy holidays. Phew, let's take a break from this year. That's all I can say.
Okay, item sixteen point seven, Office of Superintendent President, Mr. Knutson.
Just very briefly, thanks to everybody for their hard work and support. Over the last year, we've been through a challenge, and I know that it's been tough on everybody, and I sincerely appreciate the hard work that everybody has done in that regard. Along with that, please, everyone, have a very blessed and safe holiday season. God bless each of you.
Okay, we'll start down into board comments, and we'll start with our student trustee.
Thank you. I would like to first start by congratulating all students on finishing their finals and finishing the fall semester. I hope all your tests and essays went well and that you're looking forward to taking a break before starting spring. Happy holidays to everyone, and I hope everyone has a chance to rest a bit and have a great break with their families.
Thank you. Mr. Adams.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Mr. Reeves.
Well, this is the first year that Trustee Harvey and I have been on board, and I want to thank everybody in this room. I want to tell all of you that I have the utmost respect for you, even though I'm a thorn in the side sometimes. But I respect you, and I want to thank President Knutson and Patty for their help during the year. And I hope everybody has a great Christmas and a great new year, and let's make two thousand twenty-two the best. Thank you.
Ms. Gaines, or Ms. Harvey?
Yes, Mr. Butler. I just want to thank you all. As Mr. Reeve said, this is the completion of year one for us. It has been a learning experience, and I'm still very proud to represent District One. I'm proud to hear the things that you say. I want you to know they are heard. And just to represent you, it matters to me. So I want to thank you for that. I want to say Merry Christmas. Please, whatever holiday season you are enjoying, please do that to the best of your ability and get some rest.
Ms. Gaines?
I want to, first of all, say thank you to Michael Adams for his leadership this past year on the board. Always feel a sense of security when Michael is at the helm. No disrespect, Steve. You'll be, you'll be great, no doubt. I just want to say to all of the staff at Antler Valley Community College, I, I know it's been past, not just year, the past pretty much year and a half, almost two years now, has, have been very difficult for an institution, an educational institution especially, and I just want to thank everyone for the work they've done and, and how you've, you know, held steadfast to keeping you know, distance learning or whatever form of learning we had going at the community college. I know it was not an easy task, and I just want to say thank you to everybody for, for doing such an outstanding job. And I wish everyone just a happy holiday. I agree with you, Diane. Let's, we're, I think we're all ready for a couple of weeks, and, and let's get out and enjoy it a little bit this year, more than we could last year. So happy holidays to everyone.
Okay, I too endorse Michael Adams and the job he did here. He does a great job always. He's very good at pronouncing names, which is why you see him doing all the awards, because he never gets tongue-tied, which is pretty amazing. And just some inside information, I did say to Michael Adams, we can move and make you the permanent president. I'm good with that. Unfortunately, he was glad to move down there. So thank you for your, for your endeavors there. I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and this meeting is adjourned, and we have no hammer. Oh, we do, up here. And we have our next date of our next meeting, and there is no closed board. No, we're not going to reconvene to a closed session, and the date of the next meeting is January tenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the meeting is adjourned. Cool. Everybody needs to stay and sign documents.